After talking to you, you guys learned some things from unbelievable people here and projects we're having. So I want to thank the basketball team very much for coming. So I know you guys have to leave. We have a couple minutes here. And Dr. Harrison, the president of the college, I wanted to tell him thank you and his staff. Maria, where are you? Maria, the chief of staff, she got a promotion. And I want to thank you guys so much for helping coordinate that. And I know it took a lot of effort, and I appreciate that. So we can help and come do more events. Maybe next year we'll be in a park or six months in a park or something like that. So I appreciate the college for all their contributions, and they've always been welcome. Besides the city, they're always, we're always seem to be welcome on any of the projects that they have here going on. My, I will say just because she's still here, my youngest daughter, Lydia, goes to the college here. From the athletic department. Look what I did. Okay, it's probably around 5:15 at night. We have all city council people here tonight. So just so you guys know, if you didn't get a chance, each city council person, we have two at large in five districts and through the city of Wenatchee. And so you know, Councilmember Huffaker, so you know, Councilmember Rojesteen, Councilmember Harold, Councilmember Uer, Councilmember Atkinson, Councilmember Cuevas, and Councilmember Hornby. So thank you, you guys, for all being here. So the first thing we have for a special meeting tonight is a call to order. We have everybody here. Pleasure allegiance, President, where is your flag on this campus? I'd like you to lead us, please, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor. At this time, the first thing we do is a citizen comments. It's a period of opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. For any citizen wishing to address the council, please step up to the podium right over here. Give your name and mailing address and state the matter of your interest. Comments will be limited to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Volin, and I live in Wenatchee at 60 Sageview Lane. I'm here to express my support to amend sections of chapter 4.48 in the Wenatchee City Code to restrict the use and possession of exotic and wild animals and to repeal section 4.48.040. I'm here on behalf of the over 450 local residents who have signed our petition to ban the use of animals and circuses in our community. I'm also here on behalf of members of our group who have spoken previously, but who are currently volunteering at an event at the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center. I had an opportunity to look at the proposed changes to the city code, and overall, I'm thrilled. One small suggestion I would offer is to add examples of the common names for the animal categories identified in the definition of wild and exotic animals, just to add clarity for the reader. I want to sincerely thank you for all of the background work that was done to develop the amendment language, and I urge you to support these changes. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We also received, all city council people received a letter. You guys all received that, correct? Okay. Who else in the audience would like to speak to the city council? I don't know how to say this in Japanese.
Okay. Konbama, Misawa kara yoroshiku. That's a greetings from Misawa. I'm David Kelts. I'm the president of the Wenatchee Valley Misawa Sister City Association, and I just wanted to alert you that there is a group of Japanese delegation coming on from the 1st of May to the 6th of May to visit the Wenatchee Valley. There are 28 in the delegation, eight adults and 20 junior high school and high school students. And I wanted to point out that in the, we became sister city with, actually, you became sister city with Misawa in 1981, which is when I was living in Misawa. But during the time that the Sister City Association has been in action, there have been 836 delegates from Misawa have visited the Wenatchee Valley. And from Wenatchee to Misawa, there have been 591. So it has been actually a large impact on both Wenatchee Valley and Misawa. And when I got a letter from the United States Sister City Association, they just couldn't believe that an area our size has had so many people go back and forth when cities like Tacoma send two people and, you know, two people from Tokyo visit Seattle. Anyway, it's been 43 years that the Sister City has been going. We have a group that will be going here from the valley in September to visit Misawa at the same dates when the Miss Vidal took off from Misawa. And the cost this year is $2,450, which is the same price as it was in 2005. So tell me anything that is still the same price as it was in 2005. It's a wonderful trip, and I encourage city council people to go. I encourage citizens of the community. I encourage students. We do a homestay in Japan, and we see a lot in Tokyo and then spend five days in Misawa with our sister city. And we did move it to the end of September, beginning of October, because it's so hot and humid in Japan in the summer that we're hoping to make it more comfortable. And I can tell you from living in Misawa that the weather in the end of September, beginning of October is beautiful. The rice harvest is going on, the apple harvest is going on, and it is really worthwhile. And I invite you to join us. Thank you very much.
The council people that are interested, you need to let us know in the next couple weeks or so. Who else in the audience would like to come up in three minutes? Oh, Brandon?
Good evening. My name is Brandon Smith. I provide service for computers here in Wenatchee Valley. I am at 1630 North Wenatchee Avenue. I'm actually, my family's from here. I'm not originally from here. I moved here in 2009 to kind of get away from the hustle and bustle. And I wanted to just take a few minutes to note an inflection point that we're at. There are some consolidations that are going on. We have Microsoft moving in. We have some big mergers happening here. And I wanted to note that, you know, one of our providers, Zipley Fiber, has gone and consolidated some of the larger ISPs that are local to our valley. And I just wanted to say, Localtel specifically was very much loved by this community. They did a lot of good work for a long time. So hopefully, not much changes. Hopefully, you know, they keep the mission and the culture there. But just wanted to say to the city of Wenatchee, we've been blessed. I've seen, you know, being in the industry and being from the other side, I've seen, you know, what it looks like when it's, you know, kind of arms-length. And we didn't feel that way when we had Localtel. So I was, I was very, very grateful for them while they were in service under their, under their management team. So anyway, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi there. That's inconvenient. Hi. Can I get some assistance?
Yes.
Eastern. Okay. My name is Alexi Granados. My mailing address would be P.O. Box 5345, Wenatchee of 98807. I'm currently speaking on my behalf as well as, eventually, I will go address another issue. But the one I wish to focus more is, I've been noticing a lot more drugs that so happen to be in the city area. I've taken up, I've taken the bus more often, something I chose to add up. Pure, cheap, spending more gas. And the more I rode the bus, the more I realized how other people less fortunate have been using public transportation, which isn't any issue at all. What concerns me is the conversations I will hear. Not too long ago, a man who's homeless mentioned how there was a child that was overdosed with, who was drugged. That was an alarming concern for me, as well as hearing that there was a overdose at the Lighthouse Ministry. Now, I'm not entirely certain on the credibility, but it is just a concern I have as a citizen of this area. I've mentioned that to my mother, and she said with great concern, as all parents would, that to stop taking the bus, which is a valid option, as I have no issue using my own personal vehicle. But it is something that I wish to address as, I don't want to make, emphasize and say it's a super large issue happening in the city. But to say that the city is completely clean of all drugs would be also an understatement. I'm just wishing to say this, so it's a little bit more on the topic. I know multiple layers go into solving issues such as these. So it's difficult trying to pinpoint one exact thing, and that it is the process that takes time. But I just hope that you guys are able to put it somewhere higher on a priority list. So hopefully, in a few years later in the line, when we're having kids or grandchildren, that we can embrace the city somewhere safer, where we can just go out and not be concerned with any issue like that. That's the first concern I have. The second was just a friend telling me, asking if there can be potentially a class recycling service in the area. I read a little bit on that, and I understand it is more tedious, but it is something I did mention I would bring up as well. That is all, and I thank you for your guys' time in letting us be able to speak as citizens of this area.
Thank you. Chief, how can people get involved? Do you all mind addressing this for a moment, please? Thank you.
Sure. I mean, drug, drug issues in our area are, are not, I would say, any different than they are anywhere else in the state. Not higher necessarily than some other places in our state, but not lower than others as well. I would say that one of the most difficult things that anybody has to deal with as a citizen is seeing it. And one of the things that an individual can do is make sure that they're calling Rivercom and making sure they're reporting it. Those type of scenarios where you're seeing it, it's, it becomes habit-forming for other people to see it and not report it. Our officers do respond. They take care of those type of scenarios where somebody is using in open public. It is against the law. Our jails will not accept some of our criminals that are using these drugs because of the high likelihood of overdose at some times. And that's something that we're going to have to deal with as a community as well. So supporting our criminal justice system in total is not just arrest. It is also looking for other options, using our Recovery Navigator program that's local. Our officers have resources that can actually bring in other people or other organizations to assist and hopefully get people off of those drugs. Sometimes it is the first contact that can help, but sometimes it's the 15th contact that actually helps. It's not an easy undertaking with some of these folks because of the addiction itself. And when you have somebody that is a chronic, under chronic addiction, it's not an easy problem that is solved. So I think that the biggest thing that I could tell anybody in our community is make sure that you're making those type of phone calls. Let us arrive. Let us make those phone calls on our side of it that gets additional resources if we're not able to actually make the arrest and book somebody into jail. Even when we do book someone into jail, there's recovery coaches that reach out to individuals that have been booked on charges like that. But it's all the process that needs to get started. If we just ignore it, that process does not get started, and everybody continues to be frustrated with the visible fact that people are using drugs. On the supply side, I can tell you that our drug task force does an amazing job and does incredible amount of seizures every year. People that bring drugs into our area, they're investigated, they're taken into custody. Seizures occur of property as well as the drugs themselves. I don't have the figure on the top of my head, but I know that the fentanyl crisis, we have seized an enormous amount of fentanyl last year and got it off the street. So that, the drug task force is a multi-agency organization where it brings in Shalane County, Douglas County, East Wenatchee. And we're all working under the same network of information. It's a force multiplier when we're able to use additional resources, and they're highly effective. The user side or the, the side that you're mostly seeing, that's where we need help from the public, and the phone calls absolutely help.
Thank you, Chief. You know, when you can't make it to the city council also, and you, and you want to not report stuff, but let us know stuff, there's also a website you can send it to. It goes to myself and all the city council people when you have concerns, just to make sure, to be transparent on everything here. Anybody else address?
Good evening. My name is Brian Sanchez. I'm a student here at Wenatchee Valley College, and I live at 1409 Fifth Street. Two major concerns for me are, the little island we have right here, a lot of students cross. I almost got ran over a couple times this school year. Is there any way that we can fix that? Put like a light or something to warn people like, hey, slow down, do something? My other major concern was, in the corner right there, they just opened up to make it like an allway. People pull up, park, and just throw their trash, throw garbage. And even on the parking lot that's supposed to be for the students, people park there. They're not supposed to be there, whether they are homeless, whether they are unwanted guests. What can we do? Like, what, other than just calling security? There's so much that they can do before action can be done. And it's a major concern because even though I'm graduating, what about my fellow podmates, my fellow classmates, anybody in that general area? I've seen kids walking out, the families, it concerns me the most with that. So what can you guys as a city help us out as students as well to take care of that? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for addressing us. Appreciate it, man.
Hello. My name is Kristy Childs, and I live at 1537 Skyline Drive. And I am here to bring up some concerns surrounding the Skyline Drive overlook, safety and noise complaints. And we have, we have asked and tried to work with the Parks Department, because this is a public park, and so it is supposed to be maintained by the city and everything. And there's a lot of street racing that happens. There is crazy loud music that will come anytime, day and night. There's a lot of drug activity illicit sexual behavior that happens, and it, it can get bad sometimes. And so we've tried asking for speed bumps to maybe help with the drag racing, but there's been concerns with the snowplows and snows. We've tried asking for a temporary closure to see if it'll help break the habit of people going there to be able to get away with doing things they're not allowed to do other places because it's not very monitored. And we've, we've tried asking for just more assistance, and there's been a camera that's been put up, but apparently, it's not very monitored. Anyway, so I live right there. I have little kids. My neighbors have little kids, and we call all the time. And we call Rivercom, and she's like, oh, it's Kristy again. I'm like, yes, I'm sorry, but it's 2:00 in the morning. My house is shaking from the base. We have like albums, my neighbors and I just share albums and albums of like music so loud. Like, are you calling? I'm like, I call it, but nothing happens. And so, and these problems are not new. There was a guy named Gus who was helping me move a piece of furniture, and he was like, oh, man, are you concerned about the Skyline Drive overlook? Man, when I got clean, I had to stop partying there because there's just too much drugs. And I'm like, great, thanks, like, appreciate that. And then another guy named Jacob was helping me with Sheet Rock, and he was like, man, the Skyline Drive overlook, I conceived my son there 17 years ago. And you're like, great, I'm happy to hear everyone's stories. And whenever people hear, I live near there, they're always following with the story of their high school years, whether they did or did not hang out at the Skyline Drive overlook and everything that's implied with that. So it's, yeah, it's clearly not a new problem. But again, if it is a city park, it doesn't seem to be maintained as a park like other places. And so I think what my neighbors and I are asking for right now is can we just do a few things? Can we change the park hours from daylight? Because even though it doesn't really matter, people aren't following the rules, and the rules aren't being enforced, but can we change the hours at the park from like 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.? So that that way, there's like a more hard and fast rule, because especially daylight in the summer can get really late. And the other thing is, could we put up a sign that says violators will be fined? Some sort of monetary amount, $100, $200, I don't care, something. And then when we call, because, you know, we're calling all the time, and we'll see police officers come, and I feel terrible calling because I'm like, hell, everyone's not like shooting each other, like, feel bad calling. But also, it's 2:00 in the morning, and my house is shaking. So, but if we could, there doesn't seem to be any sort of hard and fast repercussions. Police come, they tell them to leave, cars will leave. Sometimes we'll literally see the same cars drive down the road and then drive back again once the police officers leave. Like, nothing is changing, and there's no, there's no penalties for people who are violating. So if there's any way to have a monetary fee for people violating the rules of the park, and then if those people could be ticketed or somehow otherwise enforced or somehow closed down that park at a certain time to make it a safe environment for those of us who live there, there.
Thanks, Kristy. Dave, could you give your information to Dave, please? He's in charge of our parks.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to address the city council?
Hello there. Brian Campbell, 1837 Jefferson Street. I just wanted to take the opportunity to speak kind of on behalf of the citizens and thank Chief Crown for his time here at the city. He's been a wonderful asset for our community, and I'm really sad to lose him, but he's done a fantastic job, and it's getting tougher and tougher every day, too. And so I'm glad to see him getting the chance to retire, but the city will be losing a great asset. And so I just wanted to publicly thank Chief Crown for his service.
So my name's Jonathan Cruz. Technically, I live in Cashmere, but I'm a Wenatchee Valley student here at the college. So it was actually funny because yesterday, as I was coming to the college, I was actually pulled over by a citizen, and he pulled out a gun at me. And it was really strange because now that I think about what Brian's saying, protecting our schools, and as I was talking to Officer Chris on the phone, he said that he was trying to catch cameras to see what, like, if we could find something. But it's really funny because we have the Christian School right upstairs, and you have the Columbia Elementary School. So I think coming up to these new things, and Gray City Church getting their new academy put into place, I think we need to put cameras into place because if the person is at large who was gonna shoot me yesterday, what's gonna go on? So just look at that. I mean, like I said, I'm not from the Wenatchee Valley, but from Cashmere. But as a student, it was really, really scary moment for me yesterday. So just put that in here, guys, just some cameras by the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, John. President?
Good evening. I'm famous here as the president of Wenatchee Valley College. I live at 1618 Horse Lake Road. First, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing not just our citizens, but also our students to participate in civic engagement, to be able to demonstrate their ability to lead and to speak their truth and bring things forward in this environment related to things that are important to them and then also important to the community. So on behalf of our board of trustees, our faculty, our staff, we just appreciate your service and just thank you so much for providing time for all of us. Thank you.
We have one more?
Hi, city council members. I don't have a letter today. I'm Denise McBurney. I live at 930 Wenatchee Hill Road, Wheeler Hill Road. See how nervous I am every time I come up here and talk to you? Wenatchee. My son is Travis Coleman. He's been missing from town for, on 4/22, it will be a year. I, I got you the 316 policy of missing persons. And I, I contacted a couple of you, and it was suggested instead of just going over the recommendations and the policies that weren't followed. You know, last time I asked for policy changes, I think that was misinterpreted. I, as I reviewed the policies, they mostly just need to be implemented. The training on the, on the back, these are the things that did not happen during the initial investigation. And I know that once, if they did happen, that Travis may be here today. So just going through all of the, I was gonna color code them for you all and put, you know, maybe we could look at change in this policy, or these ones are the ones that weren't followed, or can we get training on that? But it just got too messy, so I'm hoping I can just sit down with all of you instead of just one or two, as it was suggested by a city council member that he would like you all to be involved in. And, and just to know what my experience was and how to change things for the next special heart that may be missing. I noticed that as I was going over these, that on, on 316 point, 316.7 K, it says, "In the case of an at-risk missing person," which Travis met like seven out of nine for the at-risk, "who has been missing for an extended time, it should..." it should consult with the supervisor regarding seeking federal assistance from the FBI and the US Marshal Service. I don't know what point or, or how that would look as I just, just read that. Also, I want to thank Chief Crown for sending me Detective Hewitt. I'd like to thank, thank him for going back and trying to work with me on the policies and, and how we can, how we can make a change in the future. Also, I, I got to meet Dog the Bounty Hunter this weekend. He came to my church, The Awakened.
Okay, okay, you have three minutes left, so you gotta wrap it up.
Okay, well, I told him just a few sentences, he said he'd call me about the case. So that would be super cool if we can get him to help us out and, and find my kiddo. Thank you so much. And, and if you could just get back to me, so, or I'll just keep coming and letting you know what's, how I feel up for three minutes every two weeks, but I would really like to go through the policy and make things better. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And everybody's welcome, three minutes to talk about whatever they want at every City Council meeting. That's how this works, you guys know. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll go on to our consent items. Entertaining motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda vouchers in minutes from previous meeting. Vouchers, benefits, deductions, the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand and five hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents for March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten confirming the appointment of Lorna Kleminski to the City Service Commission. And finally, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven confirming the appointment of Sean Gross to the City Service Commission.
Second? We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Atkinson. Motion to approve agenda vouchers in minutes from previous meeting. Vouchers, benefits, deductions, the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents for March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten confirming the appointment of Lorna Kleminski to the Civil Service Commission. Resolution number twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash eleven confirming the appointment of Sean Gross to the Civil Service Commission. Any discussion or comments? All's in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Thank you. We have a couple presentations. Let's do Arbor Day proclamation first, please.
Proclamation, City Wenatchee, Washington. Whereas the Greater Wenatchee Arbor Day Committee has distributed trees in north central Washington for over thirty years and whereas Arbor Day celebrations have provided over a hundred seventy-five thousand trees to be planted in our area. And whereas trees, a renewable resource, cool our homes, clear the air and provide food and shelter for birds and beneficial insects. And whereas planting trees beautifies our community and provides a healthy, happy family activity. And whereas to help celebrate Arbor Day, seedlings will be distributed by the Greater Wenatchee Arbor Day Committee. Now, therefore, I, my quarry, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim that April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the City of Wenatchee. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our community forestry resources and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Councilman Rotus Dean. Lyle, can you have us a few words for us? That'd be great.
Yes, I do. All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Mayor. I want to let everybody know that we're having a distribution location with Martin Market from nine AM to twelve PM, East Wenatchee City Hall from nine AM to twelve PM, Pivas Mark from ten to two PM, and Indy City Hall from nine to twelve PM. And we'll, it's a five dollar donation per plant, please bring your own bag. And we're giving away pinion pines, burgundy oak, northern bayberry, regosa rose, and purple sail. And that will be on this Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks, Lyle. Thanks, Lyle. Appreciate it for being here. Next proclamation is Apple Blossom Festival. You ladies, you wanna stand up? Whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival, this, this, I'll show you to the audience. Washington State Apple Blossom Festival has been a Wenatchee community tradition since nineteen twenty. And whereas Washington State Apple Blossom Festival is a premier, family-oriented festival that showcases our people, community, heritage, and fruit industry. And whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival will really help promote this ongoing community celebration and acts as ambassadors of our community at the local, state, and international celebrities, celebrations. Maybe you're sober. Whereas Ellis Nimmo has been selected as the twenty twenty-four Festival Queen, Janissa Hepton, and Lexi Fennell selected as the twenty twenty-four Festival Princesses. Now, therefore, I, Mike Boyer, on behalf of the Wenatchee City Council, do hereby formally congratulate, bestow our appreciation to the twenty twenty-four Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Queen Ellis Nimmo. Hopefully I'm saying this right.
Yep.
Princess Janissa Hepton and Lexi Fennell. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four, Mayor Mike Boyer. Thank you, thank you seriously, ladies, for giving back. So I know it's a lot of work. You really aren't celebrities, but you, you really, we do look up to you and I know the younger generation looks up to you and it's important for you guys to continue this tradition, so, thank you very much. First time I wore one of these today because I know you guys would get one.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you guys heard, let's talk first. Who wants to talk? No, let's talk first.
Well, thank you so, so much. We, I know, I'm speaking for all of us when I say we are so, so excited for this role that we get to play and that we get to serve this absolutely amazing community.
Okay, I will just say how honored and how humbled we are to be able to serve such an amazing community where we're able to be around such amazing and vibrant people. And so we're just so grateful for this opportunity and I want to thank every one of you for making this community so amazing and giving us the best experience possible.
I think these two said it best. That's perfect.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Don't get put on the spot, that hasn't happened to you at all yet. Face, face the video when you guys do your speeches.
Okay, we apologize, we're not singers.
Well, I'll say to everybody, part of our royal duties is we have to write an apple blossom parody song, which we didn't know till after we got crowned. The next day, they told us to start writing our song and we were a bit shocked, but we're pretty happy with how it turned out.
Today, we went to an elementary school and we went into every single grade and we sang it to every single grade. So we've gotten good practice today, but.
We have trouble with this speaker every single time. Is it on full? Apple blossoms great, we're here with you today. And that's why we can't wait, it's time to celebrate. Darcy, Mary, and Crane, they always make our day. And our chaperones are great, that's what we all say. But I keep loving every minute of it. It's like I've got this history in my mind saying it's one hundred fine. Because Wenatchee is so great, 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 great. Love's a whole parade, great, 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 great. The fair will play your play, 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 play. We can't wait, we can't wait. Apple blossoms bloom, 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 bloom. Pepsi is a woo, 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 woo. City Council, you woo, 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 woo. Thank you all, thank you all.
Now, I know the chaperones, you guys probably have something else to do, so you're excused if you think of going, so.
I'd like to make one comment. Thank you so much for coming and singing to us and everything that you do. Last year, they weren't quite ready and they did, they promised to come back and sing for us and they did not, so. You have fulfilled my expectations.
And I just want to make one correction, they're not celebrities, they're royalty. Okay, that's fun. Okay, we're going to some action items. Project engineer Zach Corden.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I don't know how I'm gonna follow that up, but I'll try. Here to request a motion this evening. We've been working pretty hard since the beginning of the year, trying to onboard a consultant for a project we've been so lucky to receive some funding for from the state to go out and construct in twenty twenty-six. And for those of you at home, I'm planning to read this overview that's on my agenda report just to make sure we're all kind of on the same page. The motion I'm here to request is for City Council to authorize the city administrator to negotiate with KPG Somas, that was the consultant that we selected from the eighth that we were so fortunate to receive, for design services for the Crawford and Okanagan Intersection Improvements Project, City Project number twenty-three twenty, and authorize the city administrator to sign a contract on behalf of the city. So taking it back to what this project's about, I'm just gonna read this overview section and add some extra information that's not present there and then turn it over to you guys for some questions. So this look, this project's located at Crawford Avenue and Okanagan Avenue. Both streets are minor arterials. The intersection is minor stop control with Crawford Avenue being the through movement at a posted speed of thirty miles per hour. Both streets are the walking and bicycle route for the River Academy and are also identified as suggested or potential walking and bicycle routes for Lincoln Elementary School. Additionally, these sections of Crawford Avenue and Okanagan Avenue are recommended to have bicycle lanes for the Shalan Douglas Transportation Council's regional bike plan. There are a number of non-compliant curb ramps at the intersection and, as well as gaps in the sidewalk facilities immediately north and south of the intersection along Okanagan Avenue. In addition, city staff with a consultant from our previous roundabout project a couple blocks east conducted a traffic analysis which identified a need to reduce speeds for the safety of all modes of transportation and a need to improve the intersection's level of service due to the existing average vehicle control delay for northbound and southbound traffic on Okanagan Avenue. Due to the above noted characteristics, or I guess in this case what I just spoke to you, the City of Wenatchee prioritized a project at this intersection and stop funding that would facilitate its completion. We applied for a grant through the Safe Routes to School Program on June sixth, twenty twenty-two to improve safety and mobility for children biking and walking to these nearby, nearby schools, the River Academy and Lincoln Elementary. And we're proposing to accomplish that through construction of a mini roundabout with accessible crossings at the intersection, as well as pedestrian scale illumination, completing those sidewalk gaps I mentioned, and channelizing some bike lanes on Okanagan Avenue. We were lucky to receive a grant of one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to support completion of those elements I just listed. And subsequently, we went out and solicited for a consultant to help us design it. The selection process was conducted in accordance with state statute and our, our financial policy and procedure manual, as well as requirements of WashDOT. The fiscal impact is this is one hundred percent funded by the state through the Climate Commitment Act and the Safe Routes to School Program. So there's no dollars from the city's coffers that would need to be proffered to support the completion of this project. One thing I wanted to add beyond what I just listed is that as part of this effort, we're looking to do a bit more robust of a public outreach session. We're hoping to come to you guys in July with a workshop from their subject matter expert on roundabouts to come talk to you guys as well as the public at large and hopefully demystify any concerns or just answer any questions you might have about this type of intersection treatment in general. We're hoping to make that a, a public event, so anyone could attend. It, it would be the third Thursday of that month, so I don't know if that's the eighteenth or what exactly it is, but that's kind of what we're targeting and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And so I guess at this point, I would just turn it to you if you have any specific questions about the project you'd like answered.
Just so that my question's recorded, yeah, this microphone turned itself off and doesn't seem to want to turn it back on. So I know we've had a lot of great feedback from the intersection of Crawford and MetHow where we put in a roundabout last year, and I'm wondering how this one compares in size and design to that one?
So we're at a conceptual stage right now. It, it would be of a similar classification to that and a lot of those characteristics would translate, but unfortunately, we don't, since we don't have a design, I can't speak to specifics, but it would be a mini roundabout, which is what we have at MetHow and Crawford.
Thank you. Any other questions or not entertaining motion?
Well, Zach, I had, I had quite a conversation about this and I've never been fond of roundabouts, but I'm getting more and more comfortable with them and I'm glad you're doing this, so. With that in mind, I will move for City Council to authorize the city administrator to negotiate with KPG Somas for design services for the Crawford and Okanagan Intersection Improvements Project, City Project number two-three-two-zero, and authorize the city administrator to sign and contact on behalf of the City of Wenatchee.
Second? We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Quevis for City Council to authorize the city administrator to negotiate with KPG Somas for design services for the Crawford and Okanagan Intersection Improvement Project, City Project number twenty-three twenty, and authorize the city administrator to sign a contract on behalf of the City of Wenatchee. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Zach. Thanks for all the hard, hard work. Okay, next we have, hello, city administrator.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. Laura Gloria, City Administrator. The item before you is I am Ordinance twenty twenty-four oh six, amending chapter four point four eight of the Wenatchee City Code. Specifically, this ordinance is meant to restrict the use and possession of exotic and wild animals for the safety and protection of the residents of the city and for the protection and safety of those animals. The proposed ordinance restricts the possession and performance of those exotic or wild animals in a traveling animal act. That term exotic and wild animals does not include domestic animals, farm animals, use of animals in accredited educational programs, or use through animal care and control. There are some other details in the ordinance, but that's kind of the high level. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have. If the ordinance is approved, it will take effect within thirty days from after publication.
Laura, can you, just for everybody else, you answered my questions wonderfully this morning, I appreciate that. Could you talk about where the language of this came from so that everybody has an idea of why we chose this specific language?
Sure, so the, we modeled this ordinance after a bill that was going through Congress. That was very similar, it was about exotic and wild animals, and they came to a lot of different findings about how traveling can be harmful for animals, how it can be unsafe potentially if you're having these animals in, in restricted areas for a long time and/or in areas that are temporary, not, you know, a zoo or an aquarium that's a permanent location or area, so, yeah, we, we took those, really, we want to let language after that, that bill, which went through, I anticipate quite a bit of discussion as well with the accredited agencies and other animal care and welfare groups before it got to, to us today, so that is the, that's the backbone for that. I believe the city of Colorado also modeled it after the same one, and there are others out there, but this seemed to be the more comprehensive version of it, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Your honor, I will make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-06, amending sections of chapter 4.48 Wenatchee City Code to restrict the use and possession of exotic and wild animals and repealing section 4.48.040.
Second.
We have a motion by a council member, Rodustian, and second by a council member, Harold, for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-06, amending sections of chapter 4.48 Wenatchee City Code to restrict the use and possession of exotic and wild animals and repealing section 4.48.040. Any discussion, comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Make authority code update. Exciting, I heard a city council person said here is exciting.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm Brad Posenjack, finance director. As you mentioned, I've got three very exciting items coming up for you. A couple months ago, I'd asked city council to adopt some policy changes to help make some of our financial processes a little more efficient. Since then, we learned that one of these had to be reversed for our municipal banking account. We were informed that we have to have an elected official on our signing authority. So with this ordinance, it puts the mayor's title back into city code, that it was in city code. We had changed things around a little bit, and so the effect of this ordinance is that we add mayor, comma, space. And that is the big change with this, so if you have any questions?
I sound so important.
You are, you are, sir.
We have a, we have a motion?
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-05, amending section 1.30-020 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to city finances.
Second.
We have a motion by a council member, Huficker, and second by a council member, Heer, for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-05, amending section 1.30-020 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to city finances. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Next one?
The next, the next action I'm requesting is to authorize us to sign opioid participation settlement agreements. Over the last couple years, council has authorized us to sign a couple documents, a couple participation agreements, that will bring in just over a million dollars to help prevent and to treat opioid use. This, the motion tonight will allow the city to enter into a third opioid settlement that will bring the total up to 1.2 million. Today, over the last couple years, we've received 211,000 and are setting it aside until specific uses are determined. This is, these are national opioid lawsuits that our state attorney general has, has, has been championing, championing, and local governments are able to join onto these, we just have to sign the documents to join onto them, and then we'll be able to use the funds in the coming years.
For the purpose of?
Opioid prevention and treatment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Your honor, I will move for city council to authorize the finance director to sign any documents approved by the city attorney to effectuate the city's participation in the Jansen-Washington statewide opioid settlement agreement.
Second. Who's second? Oh, thanks. We have a motion by a council member, Harold, and second by a council member, Akinsid, for city council to authorize the financial director to sign any documents approved by the city attorney to effectuate the city's participation in the Jansen-Washington statewide opioid settlement agreement. Any comments, questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Last one, Brad.
Yep, and this is a big dollar one, it's a whole hundred dollar petty cash account. The reason we bring it to you is because years ago, all our petty cash authorization was set up in city code, and so now to add one or to remove them, we have to come to city council and ask to remove them. Maybe someday we'll make that process a little more efficient as well. But, little background, after some internal discussion with the engineering department, we came to the conclusion that providing them with a hundred dollar petty cash would help make the engineering department a little more efficient and even the finance department a little bit more efficient. There's one particular real estate transaction that is performed at the county treasurer's office, and they only accept check or cash, and so in the past, they've come, when these closing transactions happening, happen, they come to finance real quick asking for a check, and usually we're able to cut them a check within a couple hours. But it kinda makes a, an interruption to both of our offices, and so the, the solution ends up being just having a stack of tens in their petty cash box that they can run over and then they'll replenish that, and they've definitely have the capabilities to manage that, and finance will oversee that hundred dollars intently. With that, do you have any questions?
Your honor? Okay, okay. Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-08, amending section 1.20.030 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to impressed funds.
Second. We have a motion by a council member, Rodustian, and second by a council member, Akinsid, for city council to adopt ordinance 2024-08, amending section 1.20.030 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to impressed funds. Any discussion, comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, I was expecting a decision.
Yeah, thanks for cleaning this stuff up for us, appreciate it.
Good evening, mayor, mayor and city council members, I'm Captain Edgar Reinfield from the Wenatchee Police Department. I'm here today with an updated contract agreement with the Shalane County PUD. The initial agreement, I believe, was put in place in 2008 and had been amended and renewed every year since, until PUD legal decided this year it was time to redo the agreement, and I agree, it was weird, there were a lot of amendments attached. So what I have before you today is a services and independent contractor agreement, it's number 24-13427. What it provides for is $50,000 per year to be paid to the city for off-duty employment services, for off-duty overtime for officers to work extra park patrols between Walla Walla Point and Riverfront Park. And additionally, in this contract, there's a new stipulation also allowing for overtime parking enforcement on weekends, particularly in the Aronda Street boat launch parking area, which is a common problem location tied to the farmer's market at Pivas. Boaters get mad, the PUD has a responsibility to maintain boat parking as part of their recreational access with the dam licensing, and so we have a, we have a conflict that we have traditionally resolved through, we're adding a lot of parking tickets, we have a parking enforcement officer who's also capable that would be included in this agreement. The agreement is for four years through December 31, 2027, in the past, it was annual, and we would have to come do this every year, so this is also a four-year bite at the apple right now. The requirements for us are to provide them an hourly rate that we will charge for 2020, for that rate was determined by finance to be a hundred dollars and thirty-three cents an hour per officer hour is what's charged for off-duty employment, and in October, we'll have to provide them with a new rate for 2025. So requesting today the authorization for the city administrator to sign the agreement with the PUD so we can enter into this arrangement again.
And questions for Captain Reinfield?
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve and authorize the city administrator's signature on the services independent contractor agreement 24-13427 between the city of Wenatchee and the Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, which establishes terms for reimbursement for off-duty employment in the designated park areas.
Second. Councilman Quevis, was that you? Okay, thank you. We have a motion by a council member, Hufker, and second by a council member, Quevis, for the city council to authorize, to approve and authorize the city administrator's signature on the services independent contractor agreement 24-134-27 between the city of Wenatchee and Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, which establishes terms for reimbursement for off-duty employment in the designated park areas. Any other comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Thank you, captain.
Good evening, mayor and council, Rob Jammer, Public Works Director, on behalf of Aaron Kelly tonight, asking that the council award the contract to, for long line striping to Stripe Right Inc. in the amount of $106,768.46, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. This contract typically has been below $100,000, so we would have been able to approve it for our purchasing, but because it did exceed $100,000 this year, we have to bring it to council. This is the restriping of all of our city streets in the city. We had a $90,000 budget this year for that, which had been increased over the previous year, but due to increases in prices, it went up to 106. We, the additional $16,000 we'll need will come out of the street operating budget. Any questions?
When's start date on this?
Start date, it's a good question. Yeah, what's that? Third week of April, Mr. Harmon says. Third and a half.
I entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to award the construction contract for the long line striping contract, project number SW24-01, to Stripe Right Inc. in the amount of $106,768.46, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion by a council member, Rodustian, and second by a council member, Harold, to award the construction contract for the long line striping contract, project number SW24-01, to Stripe Right Incorporated, in the amount of $106,768.46, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. Any comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Ryan and Harry.
Good evening, mayor and council, Ryan Harmon, Engineering Services Manager with Harry Sharma, project engineer. We're here to, with two different action items today, just in summary, we're looking to look for authorization to award the construction contract, selling construction, and then also a consultant supplement agreement with SCJ Alliance to continue construction administration work for us. And then also, along with that motion, authorization for task authorization three with Shalane PUD for reimbursement of water work associated with that. This has been a project underway for the last several years, and it's coming up with some pretty great results. Harry will talk a little bit more to that, but he's done a great job taking over the lead and very favorable bid prices for us that he'll talk to. Right, with that, thank you, Harry.
Okay, thanks, Ryan, for the introduction. Yeah, the project that we're working on is that second from the right or left, but it is in that corner there, that across from Foothill Middle School and PSC building, you know, that corridor from Pine to Persing. And it's gonna have sidewalks, bike lane, eleven-foot wide lanes in each direction. So it's going to be widened, and right now, there's sidewalks only on the north side in portions of it, and there's no sidewalks on the south side, so it's going to have a continuous sidewalk and enhance mobility and safety of that area. And we had a very competitive bid environment. It, the lowest responsive bid is by Silan Construction in the amount of $1,609,251.45. And the fiscal impact with, with this good environment, we will have the bid price of, as I mentioned before, falls right within the allocated construction budget of $2,049,000. So there's a little bit of buffer. And this project is eighty percent is paid by TIB grant and twenty percent city funds. Proposed schedule is May with duration of eighty-five days, and May is pretty aggressive in terms of scheduling to start, but would like to try to reach that May first date to give them notice to proceed. Any, any questions on this part?
Harry, that, you presented well, and I'm gonna say it again, because I say it all the time, but it's incredible to have Harry on our team, he can go anywhere he wants, but he likes working for the city of Wenatchee. So I want to thank you in public, acknowledge that, and I appreciate your hard work on, on all these projects, Harry.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I just have a quick question, I know it's soccer season right now, and that happens to be a very busy area during soccer season, and kinda curious what impact it will have on that area during construction.
During construction, it's likely that street will be closed at certain times, but I do have, or Link has expressed concern about the route that they take. They come from Western, down through McCutrick, Tunnel to Stella, go, go over to Walmart, that's eight routes. It's quite a few vehicles going through there, so we'll have to work the details out when we get in conversation with the contractor and try to minimize.
I, I would like to also add to that question, yeah, the intention is that the road will be closed to local traffic for the duration of the project, and we'll work with the contractor as far as phasing maybe a block at a time. There will still be access to the public parking lot at our Public Services Center building, and we can maintain access across the way to get to there, but yeah, we will have to manage some of that traffic crossing over to the fields.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your honor, I would like to move for city council to award the construction contract for city project number 2208, McCutrick Street Improvements, Pershing to Pine, to the lowest responsive bidder, Selling Construction Incorporated, pending TIB approval, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents.
Second. We have a motion by a council member, Harold, and second by a council member, Hornby, to award the construction contract for city project number 2208, McCutrick Street Improvements, Pershing to Pine, to the lowest responsible bidder, Selling Construction Incorporated, pending TIB approval, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass. Thanks, Harry, thanks a lot for all your work, I know you got the next project.
Yeah, there's Jack up, we're on the second one. We're on the second one.
So, your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to, one, authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number three for construction engineering services with SCJ Alliance for the city project 2208, McHettrick Street Improvements, Persian to Pine, and two, authorize the city administrator to execute task authorization number three with Public Utility District Number One, motion in county.
Second?
A motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Uwer to authorize city administrator to execute supplement number three for construction engineering services with SCJ Alliance for city project 2208, McHettrick Street Improvements, Persian to Pine, and two, authorize the city administrator to execute task authorization number three with Public Utility District Number One of Schleen County. Any other discussion? Comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director, here tonight to ask the council to approve the attached resolution 2409 establishing a public hearing date for the proposed North Columbia Street vacation on May 9th, 2024, on May 9th, 2024 council meeting. We had notices previously, but when we switched the meetings around in March, it messed up our hearing date. And so our city attorney guided us thoughtfully and recommended that we renotice it, which of course Tammy loves to do. So we're back tonight to ask you to authorize us to do that.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve resolution 2024-09 establishing public hearing for the proposed North Columbia Street vacation at the May 9th, 2024 city council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion by council member Uwer and second by council member Atkinson for city council approve resolution number 2024-09 establishing a public hearing for the proposed North Columbia Street vacation at the May 9th, 2024 city council meeting. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for bringing it up again. Thanks, city attorney. I heard a city council person says he's back.
He's back, ready. And while I'm up here, I'm going to throw out the shameless plug that both our GIS and engineering departments are looking for interns. So if you are interested or know anybody who may be, please pass that along. So yeah, I'm filling in.
Paid intern, right?
Paid internship, yes. And as our city engineer so eloquently put it, priceless education. So again, Ryan Harmon, Engineering Services Manager, filling in for Charlotte Mitchell, who's off at APWA our spring conference this week. I'm here requesting city council to authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number one to the contract with SCJ Alliance for our Red Apple Road Improvement Project. This was another transportation improvement board, TIB grant award that we received, 1.9 million dollars approximately, to do these urban upgrades at Red Apple Road that includes our pavement restoration, sidewalks on both sides, and definitely some traffic calming elements as well. Over the, that was awarded in December '22. May of last year, we selected SCJ Alliance to do this work for us. We started, kicked off with an open house in July with the neighbors to just hear what they're looking for with this opportunity that we've got. We've taken that, put together our 30% design that you can see over there, and with that have a established footprint for what we're looking at. So now we're looking to continue with SCJ Alliance to perform right-of-way services and to begin those negotiations with the property owners. I'll also add, Charlotte wanted me to mention that May 22nd is going to be a second, a second public meeting, open house for that, that project, for those who have questions and want to hear more about that. The right-of-way budget is included within our capital budget that was approved. Yeah, with that, entertain any questions?
Public meeting held at city hall?
Tentatively, I'll say tentatively, it is going to be actually at the high school. We're hoping to be right there at location, but that'll, Charlotte will hammer that out a little bit more with the school district and SCJ and get that advertised.
And this again, this is where it's going to be, you're going to add speed humps.
So this is the same corridor. We are not part of this project, but outside of it, we are going to do a speed cushion pilot. And so a speed cushion is basically a square speed hump where it fits within the travel way, where an emergency vehicle heading to the hospital can straddle it, no problem and not hit it, not need to slow down, but a passenger vehicle, anywhere from your small vehicles or your small cars to large passenger, or a large pickup truck is going to hit it at least with a wheel and be forced to slow down.
Just a comment, thank you for all the work you put into it, the outreach that went into it, the community engagement that you've done so far with it. This is a perfect example of listening, putting a plan together, and action.
Well, I'll only be able to give the credit to Charlotte, but I will pass that along. Yes.
I'd like a motion, I'll put city council to authorize the city administrator to execute supplement one to the contract with SCJ Alliance for the city project number 2315-Red Apple Road Vista Place to Miller Street.
Second?
We have a motion by council member Cuevas and second by council member Harold for city council authorize the city administrator to execute supplement one to the contract with SCJ Alliance for city project number 2315, Red Apple Road Vista Place to Miller Street. Any other comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Hearing none, motion pass. Thank you. So our, when I say our, that means not everybody from the city, our city administrator is going to tell us what the mayor did last week. Don't forget the flywheel.
Yes, I have it on here. Thank you. So yeah, for the last week, just a couple of updates. As Ryan mentioned, we do have two engineering internships available for engineering and GIS. We also have lots of other exciting positions available, I think up to 15, so please go to the city website if you are interested in learning more. Please also save the date for May 6th. That is the groundbreaking for the Wannachy Convention Center expansion and renovation project. We're looking at around 2:00, but we'll send out more information on that, but please save the date so that you can join us on that very special day. Want to give a big shout out to both our code enforcement department and Wannachy Police Department for a code abatement case. There was a house near Lincoln Elementary that was, you know, I think they said they pulled out an RV, five, six, several cars, abandoned cars, lots of garbage. And so it's been a big code nuisance for the community and for those neighbors, and so they were able to clean that up this week. And so that was a great partnership between the two departments. Flywheel is next week, April 17th through 19th. Mostly the conference is on the 18th, but they've always got all of these great activities going on before and after. They have Latino Funder Day as well, which is a free event that you can come and listen to Latino funders from all over the world, literally come talk about their businesses, about entrepreneurship, about investing, and the, and then of course, the conference on the 18th where you get to hear from lots of startups who want to get their business going and there's 250,000 dollars available for awards to get those businesses up and running. So that's always a really exciting program to go to. Let's see, what else is here? The mayor met with state treasurer Mike Pellicati Wednesday to learn kind of more about their role and then also just, you know, keep those relationships open with our state delegation. What else is going on? I think I've got mostly it unless there's something else you would like me to cover.
That's enough.
Okay.
How about the city council committees? You got, you got on some things last week. You want to tell us about?
I had a Schleen County Community Action Council meeting. Something to look forward to this weekend. They're doing a, a empty bowls dinner at Wannachy High School from 4:00 to 7:00. And it's a good way to learn about what they do and also eat some soup, as well as the pantry that was, we did a tour a couple weeks ago, should be up and running soon. Something to look forward to. Yep, thank you.
I attended the museum board meeting yesterday and got to see some really exciting presentations on the renderings for what they hope for the new building, which is very exciting. It would be a wonderful addition to our community to see things brought back to life and updated and some really fun, interactive things that would be great for all ages. It was really exciting to see.
I'll go next, I guess. I saw the WDA, they just voted to move forward with their new strategic plan, which is pretty exciting. It's a three-pronged approach. I'll speak kind of broadly about it, but it's more of partnershiping with the city, partnering with all of their downtown businesses to make a positive impact in there. And so excited, hope that they can accomplish those things and we can be a good partner with them.
Next week, I'll be attending the public safety meeting at Lisa, right? Yes. I got invited to be a guest speaker for the tea night here at the college. I don't know if you guys have heard about it. It's sponsored by Cafe. So I'll be coming here at the college next Friday, the 19th, I believe. And I'm also super excited, mayor and council, that April 25th is chief for the day. I'd just like to mention that my niece got chosen to be a chief for the day, so I'll be there.
So you've all probably got a flyer that I believe Tammy put out for salad delegation welcome reception at 3:30 on Wednesday, May 1st at the East Wannachy City Hall. City Hall, I hope you all can make it. I will be preparing your dinner, so I won't be there. Anyway, it's, the reception is followed up by dinner at 5:00 at the Wannachy Valley Senior Center, and I hope you'll come.
Also on the trip, and we need to make some decisions on people that are going to go over by the end of this month?
They have to, they have to have their applications turned in and with, along with their passport by May 24th. These kind of, they've got to make the airline reservations on the 24th or we lose our group block on the airlines and then it gets really expensive to fly.
Okay, so if we have a couple city council people that want to go, let us know. As soon as you can, that'd be great. So the new rules is we have to have a motion to close the meeting, which always strikes me as, but before I do that, I want to thank, thank you very much for allowing us to come and do this and maybe next year, we can do it again, make it a habit. I think that'd be, you know, you talk to your student body, but that would be something that I would like to do as far as the city of Wannachy. So look, always looking for great ideas to be more transparent and to come out in the community and get more involved. With that, if we could get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion, your honor, that we adjourn this meeting at this wonderful site.
Second?
A motion by council member Atkinson and second by council member Hornby to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.